Welcome, everyone. The board is now back in open session. At this point, are there any public comments? If there are no public comments, does anyone have any proposed changes to the agenda? If not, then we move right into the superintendent's report.
All right. Wonderful. I am going to welcome Kazimera Gorman from Blythe Park School, and she is going to introduce some student presenters.
Good evening, everyone. I brought a couple of extraordinary teachers with me this evening. So I have Mrs. Lauren Allen, she's our advanced learning teacher at Blythe Park, and then also Ms. Jennifer Grover, and she is our 5th grade teacher. I also brought some pretty amazing students. So, boys, if you just want to raise your hand when I call your names so they know who you are, so Joey Malo, and then we also have Zach Rosenfeld, and Cooper, you guys are partners, okay, and then Cooper, and then Reese Jackson. And so they are going to be sharing with us today and speaking with us a little bit about their study and their experience with the phenomenon of Earth systems and natural disasters, and specifically how we use phenomena as a way to understand and make sense of the science that we learn, and also how we use phenomena to engineer potential solutions to world problems. And so, at that note, I am going to hand it over. So, Ms. Lauren Allen, are you going to be going?
Yeah. Awesome.
Hello again. Well, I was here last week, last month. So, I thought, I work with this wonderful new teacher to the district, and I thought what a great segue for you to actually see it, you know, in the final stages of the assessment. Okay? So...
So, I know Lauren talked to you last time she was here about the NGSS standards, and that was what we took and we ran with. So, the actual standard is about Earth systems, and the goal was to build a model showing how the Earth's systems interact with each other, or the different spheres of the Earth interact with each other. And on that note, I'm going to pass it to the kids, because they're the ones that did all the hard work.
Before any of the models or any of the real planning that came into position, we first learned about each sphere individually. The four spheres are the geosphere, hydrosphere, biosphere, and atmosphere. The geosphere is one of the most commonly known spheres. It's the rock, land, and solid, nonliving things. The hydrosphere is basically all the water on the world. The atmosphere is like the atmosphere that surrounds our planet, and is air and all air molecules. Finally, the biosphere, which is you and me and all living plants around the world, and animals.
And then we looked at how they interact with each other, which the geosphere and the biosphere. The geosphere is the soil which moves, and the tectonic plates for the earthquake that move and starts the earthquake, starts moving the biosphere, which is all living things, and it starts the earthquake. Finally, we had to plan and create a model, oh wait, to show how the spheres interact in our disaster. We created Google Slideshows to explain our natural disasters in our models.
Next, we each got assigned a disaster, and we researched our specific disaster and how the spheres interacted with each other disaster.
Explain your tsunami.
Okay. Here, I'll look for the watering first.
Can you guys move it more to the middle?
Yeah, I'm going to stand up. I don't care. Because I'm short.
I don't know if it's going to be enough water. I don't like the raft.
Nice.
Okay, so, we made the tsunami, so we made the roads and the houses, which, and the car, and then we made the oceans, and everything's, we'll get this void, hopefully, yeah. Look at this flash.
Sharon, explain the spheres in your mind.
Okay, so the spheres are like the biospheres, like the people in the houses and the cars, and the hydrosphere, which is the tsunami, and, well, it's caused by an earthquake, so the geosphere is involved in it, and it also like erodes the dirt, which is part of the geosphere, so, here.
All right. You guys ready? Take your best in the middle. Explain what you did.
Okay.
I'll carry that for you.
So, for the natural disaster that we were assigned with, we were assigned earthquakes, and so, by first glance at our model, we have two houses with the people living in it, that will represent the biosphere, and then the trees, and the trees and the people living in the houses represent, well, yeah, they represent the biosphere. And then the geosphere is the soil and the tectonic plates that we made, which you can't see right now, but you probably will be able to see. So, how earthquakes work are underneath the ground, about 118 miles underneath the ground, tectonic plates that clash can sometimes start earthquakes, and so, the tectonic plates that move, and then they start clashing, and they start starting to shake.
That's so cool. Oh, my gosh.
Very good.
You guys did a really good job with that, both the project and your explanations. I really liked that you all built physical models of the processes that you were trying to model. In fact, that's, if you ever go on to become scientists or engineers, that's in fact what you have to do, is to model what you're trying to understand. The world, real world's very complicated, obviously, so you simplify it in a model like you did there. So I think that's a really, really great project you guys did. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, great work, guys.
Thank you so much. The other thing, October is Illinois' principal appreciation month, and so I've shared a proclamation, I think last year we maybe read that, but I really just want to take this moment here during principal appreciation to really appreciate the efforts of Todd Gierman and Kazimera Gorman, Pete Gatz, Kristi Mullen, April May, and Kim Hefner. They are really an outstanding group of principals, and I added in Kristi as our assistant principal. And I think, I just read an article, I think just today, how principals perhaps have one of the most complicated jobs, between obviously being our instructional leaders in the building, supporting our students, getting to know all of our families, and connecting with all of our families, challenging staff to make sure they are learning and growing, and always problem solving. So I really want to thank them. I know they're not here tonight, I think we appreciate them by not having them come to a meeting, but, but anyway, Kazimera's here, and I think she was here last year taking one for the team, as she said. So, anyway, it's a wonderful group, and it's a privilege to work with all of them, and I very much appreciate them, and I know you all do too. So, it's an important month, so, thanks to all of them. I had one, two other, three other items on my superintendent's report. I just shared our committee agenda from our October 10 facilities advisory committee. So just to make sure the community is aware, and I know the board is fully aware, that the facilities advisory process continues to move forward. We have preliminarily looked at some revised design ideas for Ames. We're also beginning to look at some updated front entrances, and again, looking at how we might achieve our goal of separating play and parking to the best of our abilities here in District 96. So, more to follow on that. The committee will take a little more time to chew on those ideas, and then we'll be bringing everything back to the public, anticipate probably at the December committee of the whole meeting, the December 5 meeting. So, we will keep everybody updated on that. I also want to announce, we are looking at a shift and change in our volunteer screening procedure, and this has been something we have looked at, both from a policy, talking to our parent leadership team, really looking at how we, again, continue to just promote the utmost safety and security for all of our students. And so, we are going to begin a volunteer screening process where people who volunteer, where they are working directly with children, so this, as I always say, this doesn't mean when you come to the Halloween party, but this is when you may chaperone on a field trip, or work through our language, or some of our specialized reading programs, or something where we have parents working with individual children or small groups of children, that our volunteers would go through a formal screening process, and we'll be sending all those communications out, but wanted the board to be aware, and the community to be aware, that this also is very much not meant in any way to disincent volunteers, but to really continue to encourage and invite volunteers. We need volunteers in our schools, we so appreciate our engaged parent community, and the parents that I've talked to are actually very supportive of this plan and this idea of just further promoting safety in this area. And then one other kind of fun item is that we had a fair number of archived cardboard boxes in our district office space, in our safe, and there were just some really lovely documents about the Blythe School construction way back when, in the 1940s. There were class pictures with named students, and just a long history of District 96, and really felt that perhaps these items would be better at the Riverside, better taken care of at the Riverside Museum. So, the Riverside Museum has carefully taken our items, and will be cataloging and having our school items on display at the museum. So what you have to the board is a deed of the gift that we have made to the Riverside Museum, right here in Riverside, Illinois. So, those are my superintendent report items.
There's actually one item in that, in those boxes that I thought was really interesting, which is that there's a ledger from the first superintendent, Superintendent Ames, from about the year 1900, in which, it's this big, thick book, in which he wrote, you know, by hand, all of the purchases they made throughout the course of a year. It's amazing to see.
Let's recreate it. 2018.
Yeah. It was fun to go through. I encourage people to go to see the items at the museum. I think they'll be on, you know, sort of more usable, user-friendly display, and opportunities for people to take a look at things.
They're fun on the weekends. It's a really neat little place that a lot of people have been, and the volunteers did a great job.
I did want to add just one thing, back to the facility advisory committee update. If board members read the update that was sent about the meeting, if you have any comments or anything, please reach out to Rich or myself. We're meeting hopefully in the next two weeks, so I would love to hear any comments before then, so that we can, you know, use those in the conversation as well.
All right. Thanks, Martha. You guys don't have to stick around for the rest of me, it's quite boring.
I'd have to say, you were the first group who didn't immediately leave. Blythe Park, you guys are good.
If you want to stay, of course, you're welcome.
Exciting stuff coming up in the committee report.
The consent agenda, all right.
Have a great night.
Thank you. Would the board secretary like to read the consent agenda?
Yes. Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the closed session on September 19th, parts 1 and 2, the regular business meeting on September 19th, and the committee of the whole on October 3rd. It also includes the personnel report, and the payables prelists of September 28th and October 17th, with the additional note that those are not handwritten.
And they're not 2000 dollars. So, are there any items that any board member would like to be pulled off of the consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next item is the Riverside Educational Council. Does Riverside Educational Council have any comments? No comments, then move on to board member comments. Does any board member have any comments about any?
I attended the presentation last week at the PTO's and the district sponsored with Carrie Goldman about social media, and it was a, we had a great turnout. The library was full, and the presentation was great, and I know that a lot of the documents were shared to parents. So, I highly recommend looking at those. She had some really good tips, and it was nice to see there was children in the crowd too, and she really made them, you know, it was nice for them to be involved.
Yeah, I think Carrie went, the scouting troops were able to get kind of the responsible social media education from it, and I think that's a really good way to intermingle our coops with what's happening.
Yeah. I thought it was a presentation that was well.
Yeah, I know.
Are they also going to present to the kids in the schools, or not?
So, there's been ongoing work in that area through available digital citizenship. So, I would call it ongoing work, and actually Carrie Goldman has done some specific work with the Hauser staff last year around just sort of, I'll call it positive discipline, some of the restorative practices, talking about social media, anti-bullying. So, I think she's been very well received as a speaker and as a professional development provider, and just a good resource to our community.
Yeah, and what was really nice is I was at her parent presentation, was it two years ago when she was here last? And it was, it really felt like a whole new presentation, it wasn't the same information. Like, it was really, because I even thought like, ah, do I need to go? I've already been through one of these, but it was a different focus about social media, and it was great, so.
That's good to hear, because I know that there's a lot of evidence, this is accumulating, that kids nowadays are more likely to become depressed, or, people do attribute that, some of that, to social media.
Yeah, and it was interesting, because she talked a lot about that, and about like the, you know, physiological effects of all of that, and how kids are more prone to the risks and the downs of the social media based on their, you know, where they're at in their development. So, it was really interesting.
Glad to hear that, yeah.
Well, I only have one kind of silly comment. I read to the kindergarteners, and it was the best thing ever. I just, I had forgotten, you know, having an 8th grader, how special it is, and I will say, you know, the staff at the office are so welcoming, and I'd forgotten all of that, and it was just lovely, and it's really neat to see the next group of kids come up, and they're very sweet, and they sang their hallway song, and they're ready for the hall, and they were very, already, it's only October, they already knew what they were doing and why they were doing it, and they're talking about nonfiction versus fiction, and why, and they're kindergarten, it was awesome, yeah, it was great. I didn't teach in that area.
Did you read the nonfiction, or did you read?
It was a fiction book, and it was a really cool set of choices, too, because sometimes you're like, oh, which book am I going to get, you know? But it was a nice, the librarian did a good job, so. It's kind of a fun surprise that you forget as an old mom.
One thing I wanted to say to you about Carrie Goldman's presentation is it is principal's appreciation month, and I was very appreciative that all of our principals and administrative staff were at this meeting as well. So, it was great to see, I'm sure they, you know, learned something that they could share with their staff, so, I appreciate that.
Any other comments? If not, we move on to the committee reports. Rich can't be here tonight, so I don't know if he has any updates or not, but I assume not, so.
So, move on.
Dan, any updates on the policy?
Let's see, so Martha and I did speak, I believe it was last week, on the policy. She'd mentioned the volunteer for updating the volunteer policy. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Yeah, no, we had, I think it's one of the most exciting things I've heard in a long, just, and Meryl always has a lot of cool projects going, but this was a neat interdisciplinary talk about social studies and science, and how they're piloting some new initiatives for both, and it seems like a really exciting time where the kids are going to question, and so all of that you can read or watch.
Sure. Yeah, next we move on to old business. First item of old business is residency policy 760. At this point, is there a motion for the Board of Education to approve the revised policy 760, residents as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Dan, would you or Martha like to just remind people exactly what the change was here? That we talked about it last month, but just in case someone's watching and they don't know what we're talking about here?
So, yes, as you mentioned, we've talked about this before, this is an idea of making a change to residency policy to allow, at the discretion of the superintendent, allow parents who are moving to the district or have intention to moving to the district within the first 30 to 60 days of the school year, to have a chance to register their kids in the district if they're making a strong commitment, and commitment in writing, I believe it says, that they will be attending, and they'll be moving in within a suitable amount of time. But again, this is at the discretion of the superintendent, who has the final say on those matters.
Dan, is there any discussion on this policy proposal? If not, then Margie, please call the roll.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Mr. Marhol?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thanks, Margie. Next, we have the 2018 levy update. I don't know if Mr. Fitton would like to have anything to add to what you talked about last time?
I didn't change things.
Okay, so, no changes. Does any board member have any questions for Mr. Fitton?
I just have one about new property. Do we ever get refreshed updates from Fran?
Fran Sigwitsch.
I need to get with the assessor. So, for now, I'm using one similar to last year.
Last, okay.
I still need to get.
Because I know it's a, yeah, it's an unknown thing.
Yeah.
Okay.
There's not a lot of swings in that number in this area.
Okay, we're all, not lately, yeah. Thank you.
And we just, we have to have a final number for December, so.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Fitton. Next item is, any other questions on the levy? If not, then we move on to new business, there are only one item, which is a draft of the 2018, 2019 district goals. I don't know if Martha, you wanted to say anything about these?
Sure. So, I mean, the strategic plan, as you all know, is really our guiding document, and then last June, the board had some time to meet at a committee of the whole meeting to really talk about priorities within those goal areas. The district leadership team did the same thing during the summer months, and since that time, also, each administrator developed their own set of annual goals. So this is really kind of a hybrid of all of that, and keeping it at high level for, certainly for the board and for the community to share. I have formatted these a little bit differently each year, just trying to find the best way that comes off as certainly succinct and readable, something we would share on our website, and probably I'll share through a monthly communication as well. So, just wanted you all to have them. I know Dave Barsati, who's not able to be here tonight, actually had already suggested that perhaps we separate the long-range facility plan, capital project, and operations and maintenance as two separate goal areas. So that's certainly something we could do. But our people, this is again, new business discussion, so if there is other thoughts or ideas that you all have, would be interesting hearing that, obviously.
What's the advantage of separating them?
Just that they're separate, they're separate areas of focus, I mean, they're all related to facilities.
Does it mean you make sure they're emphasized differently, or? Okay.
I read that, and I'm totally putting thoughts out there, but I guess when I read that, I thought, what would make sense to me to separate them would be, maintenance would be much more short-term.
Yeah.
Whereas the other would be, the capital would be more longer-term.
Yeah, I guess it puts more emphasis, which is probably a good thing, on the long-term capital, to keep it on schedule.
Right, and I think there are a number of projects on the maintenance side that just could be done, and should be done, in the near term. Just, we know we have to do them. Just get them on the way.
Maintenance is an ongoing process.
An ongoing process.
Capital is a more variable, and it has highs and lows. And we build an addition, and we spend a lot of money all at once. Maintenance is continuing, as all of our homeowners know.
Right.
I still like the idea also of a multi-year operations plan, too, so we know ahead of time when those big roof items and things.
Right, something that's more succinct than the facilities plan.
Exactly, right.
I think that's a good idea.
More specific to them. We know this is coming in two years, and then that's three years, and then we can see it.
Yeah, and that's very much the intention expressed.
It's kind of hard to visualize for me, at least.
I will say that just, if you're looking at formatting, I do appreciate this format so much. I think this is much easier to read, and I'm not, the previous years was like really long, and kind of you lost track of what you were talking, you know? So I do like this format, it's such a minor thing, and not important.
No, thank you. I spent a lot of time thinking about that, so, thank you.
On the finance goal, the only change I'd suggest there is that, I think I'd put a period after District 96, and maintain solid fiscal position for District 96, period. The balancing the budget and updating five-year projections are good things to do, we should definitely try to do that, but they're not in themselves synonymous with good fiscal stewardship. So I would just make that, those are some examples of things you want to do, but they're not sort of in themselves sufficient.
Would you want to include them as descriptions in some way?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, for example, balance the budget, and we will have solid five-year projections, and I think last year you had, you know, we'll carefully analyze our expenditures to make sure they're aligned with our priorities, and that kind of thing. But I think the goal should be sort of, we'll maintain the fiscal position, you know, that's the goal.
Yeah. I have one small suggestion, just thinking about if I was like a parent and I read this. For number two, just about the shifts, for under curriculum instruction, the shifts in new reporting tools tied to learning standards. I think if we put either grades or assessments, I think it'd be a little fuzzy, they wouldn't know what we were talking about necessarily.
Yeah, because I don't think we're going to actually shift any tools this year, or if.
No, yeah, I just didn't know if they knew what we were talking about, yeah.
Can I start interpreting it as a new report, or is it being presented, which is not what we're actually?
No, I understand, this is for teachers, I just didn't know if people would understand what that meant, so.
Sure. We can just like maybe words.
Yeah.
Any other comments about the draft of the goals?
I have one question about the social-emotional learning stance. I know we've been presented with our multi-tier system of support, are we, do we want that labeled that way here, or for number three or four under the curriculum, or is it better just to leave them as strategies? I'm only, I'm asking from your expertise, like.
Right.
Or is it just better to keep it clean?
Right, I mean, I think there's a lot of work going on in the social-emotional area.
Yeah.
That was a hard one to sort of put it in one brief nugget. We can talk more as our.
I mean, this is very clean, which is nice. I just didn't know.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's through updated assessments, the MTS.
That's where it can get really long.
Examining new tools.
So maybe it's better short?
Yeah.
Unrelated, I don't know, for, what I, as I look through this document, it kind of makes me feel like what we set out in our strategic plan several years ago, a lot of it has been achieved, not all of it, of course, but I feel like we're moving to a point where, and I'm not saying tomorrow or anything, that it might be time to relook at a strategic plan for the next coming years, now that we have a stability in leadership, and a lot has been accomplished over the last three years. Like, these goals feel like the same goals we've been working towards, but I think we can actually move beyond them. So, I'm just saying that I think maybe a strategic planning type of project is maybe due.
I think what would be exciting, you know, we've been thinking about the strategic plan, or the board has, and how to engage the community, like, what, I mean, we know facilities is on the minds of many community members, obviously, and I know, is the education and learning is the top priority, but certainly certain social, emotional, and safety, even speaking like we were just talking about, the social media conversation. So, I think those things are all represented enough, but I think it would be interesting to think about how we would make sure we're gathering that feedback from a lot of our new families, and.
Yeah, it just feels like, from where I sit, as a board member, three years ago, felt like a very long, very different time, and it was, and what we did at that point was very necessary, and, but I feel that maybe we're starting to, you know, to move on from that plan, or build upon, expand upon that plan.
Yeah, I think I support the building upon. I feel like a few of these, we still have some.
Oh, no, absolutely, and I don't mean like ditch this and start all over, I mean, like, I think it's probably time to build upon and expand, and be able to project a little bit further, so.
I think your point's well taken, I mean, just to, slightly sort of devil's advocate approach, I mean, a lot of these goals are sort of generic, you know?
Yeah.
We're going to maintain the fiscal position, we're going to have good, so, it's not totally obvious to me that we'll come up with some sort of totally new thing that's.
Right, right, but I, maybe it's just thoughts to explore, because I think if we looked at it two years ago, we did have very concrete, the goals were more like concrete things that you could actually, like, oh, we're starting this, we have this, I just feel like.
I think we had a lot of state.
Oh, we had so much to do.
Produce, change.
Meryl had a lot to do.
Meryl's been through how many curriculum updates, and, yeah, any more news on that front? Yes. So some of that, I think, is just dealing with those, those cycles of state. Yeah.
Good point. Uh, any other comments or questions about these drafts? If not, then, um.
Is this the shortest?
We're on a roll lately.
Is there any public comment? If not, future meeting dates are November 7th at 7:00 p.m., special meeting at Hollywood. Uh, November 21st, regular business meeting is canceled. December 5th, committee of the whole meeting. And December 19th, um, regular business meeting at 7:00. When we cancel that, uh, regular business meeting, is that gonna be a problem in terms of, um, passing the?
Levy?
The, you know, the payables prelist, and these sort of, that sort of thing?
Oh, the payables, yeah.
I think we're gonna be okay with that. You know, we're gonna have November 7th as a special meeting. And then, you know, if need be, if there was something else that was really pressing, we could do the same with December 5, committee of the whole, too.
Okay, okay, okay. All right.
Okay.
At this point, uh, we're gonna go back into closed session, but there's not gonna be any action. So at this point, is there, um, a motion to enter into closed session for the purpose of discussing the purchase or lease of real property of the district, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing whether a particular parcel should be acquired?
So moved.
Second.
Margie, please call the roll?
Uh, Mr. Marhol? Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Hunt?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
Aye.
Mr. Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried.